God bless you, really appreciate you being here. Tonight's a great night in that we are having a town hall meeting. Town hall meetings historically have been where the fathers of the different communities would get together either politically or socially to talk about matters, issues that would affect the populace and give them an opportunity to express their ideas and their problems that they would be having in their different areas. So we're borrowing the town hall meeting tonight to address a vital issue, a very important issue. And in no small way, I just want to share with you, I just believe this is such a critical issue. I don't know that we as a country can face a greater issue than this redefining of marriage, traditionally as we know it between one man and one woman. I don't know of anything greater, other things perhaps just as important, but I don't know of anything greater than this particular issue as it affects our nation. And for that reason, we want to really thank you again for being here. We want to give you every opportunity to share some of your questions, hoping others are going to be making their way here as well. And we are grateful as well for the Maryland Marriage Alliance represented, amen. They have spearheaded this fight, and I want to use that word carefully because it is a fight. This is a huge battle that we're engaged in. And thankfully, Maryland Marriage Alliance has taken the forefront in this fight locally. And they've done a stupendous, a marvelous job pulling together the different constituents of Maryland to draw attention to this issue. And I just want to celebrate once again what God is doing in this state through Maryland Marriage Alliance and Derek McCoy and his leadership. So we're hosting Maryland Marriage Alliance and Derek McCoy as he walks in the door now. So really appreciate him and the great work. Really appreciate it. God bless you, sir. Good to see you. It's good having you. And he has with him a few people that are working with Maryland Marriage Alliance. And before the evening, we want to introduce them tonight because they've been so instrumental in making this happen and don't want to ignore their place in the great work that's taking place. You're here tonight and prayerfully you have some questions that we can answer. But in order to answer that, we have assembled a distinguished group of men who indeed have set themselves apart as leaders in different ways. Tonight, for instance, we have Greg Quinnlan, the president of PFOX. We also have Austin Nimix, he's the attorney with the Alliance Defense Fund, I think I'm saying that correctly. And we obviously, we have Director Derek McCoy, Chairman of Maryland Marriage Alliance. But we also have Pastor Robert Anderson. And Pastor Robert Anderson, he's going to basically bring to us the biblical basis for our position as represented from God's holy word. So we're so grateful to have these men. And I'm going to ask if they will please take the roster and so as they're going up, amen. And once they have assembled there, I want them to take a few minutes and introduce themselves and share briefly some ideas that will get us into our town hall meeting. We're going to open with prayer and invite God's blessing upon our time. Really grateful for you to be here as well. Father, how thankful we are for Jesus Christ. And we celebrate you above all, all else. And we're so grateful to know Jesus Christ in this particular time in human history. We feel like, Lord, we've been called to this place, this time, for this cause. I pray that you'll find us faithful, Lord. I ask that you bless our time. Thank you for those that are here, those that are perhaps on their way. And with grateful, Lord, once again, for the wonderful, wonderful leaders that are in our midst tonight. And we just pray that you'll bless and be glorified through it all. In the name of our wonderful Savior, Jesus, we pray with thanksgiving, amen. Because our time is limited, we, I'm going to ask that you all, that we all be governed by a sense of decorum in sharing our thoughts and our questions. So if you hear something that perhaps you don't agree with, don't, you know, boo and, you know, throw tomatoes and things of that nature, but...
Thank you.
Yeah. But we really are limited in time, but we want to make it, use our time wisely. So we're going to have some gentlemen in the aisles with mics. So if you have a question, just raise your hand and we'll be sure to get to you. And with that, we're going to ask that you keep your questions, I should say comments. If you're going to comment, please keep it real short and concise, giving time, again, making sure that everybody has an opportunity to share. And so with that, I'm going to ask the gentleman, if you will, starting with Pastor Anderson, and introduce yourselves and get to know the group that's here tonight. God bless you, sir.
Thank you Pastor Gaines, and thank you community for opening up the door to have a dialogue and from my perspective, injecting what God has to say about the matter. We have seen so many things on television and on the air and various other media, but there's only one voice I think more important than anybody else's voice, and that's a voice that comes from above. My name is Robert Anderson, I pastor Colonial Baptist Church in Randalls Town, Maryland. We've been out there for 15 years and we thank God for the ministry that he's doing there. We have some people, in fact, here from Colonial, and we're looking forward to this evening, Pastor.
God bless you. It's good to have you, sir.
Well, my name is Derek McCoy. I serve, get the opportunity to serve as the chairman of the Maryland Marriage Alliance right now. And it's good to be here in this house and good to be with you tonight. We hope to, what we try to consistently do is talk about this issue from a very civil perspective and helpful perspective, so you understand why we value what we value from many broad reasons. Not, you know, from our end of it, it's, we have deep-seated faith beliefs at the same time. There are also areas which we believe just fundamental to society why marriage is so intrinsically important and valuable. And so that's what we talk about and we are looking forward to answering questions and dialoguing about this.
Amen. Great to have you.
Good evening. My name is Austin Nimix and I again want to echo the thanks for you opening your house this evening, Pastor. I work for a company called the Alliance Defending Freedom, formerly Alliance Defense Fund. We are a national Christian legal advocacy group. We litigate cases across the country involving religious freedom, marriage in the family and the sanctity of human life. And I serve as the vice president of our marriage and family team. ADF has been involved in every major legal marriage battle in this country dating back to Massachusetts in 2003, all the way up to the cases that are currently pending before the United States Supreme Court. And so my understanding of what I'm supposed to offer this evening, other than the absence of a tie on the stage, is a legal perspective on the questions that are pending before you, or the question, question six that is pending before you. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be here.
Can I ask you, can I ask you, real quickly, is what we're doing legal?
Is what we're doing right now legal?
Yeah, in a church.
It's not only legal, it's biblical.
Very good, very good. Amen. I want you to speak to that at some point.
I'll be happy to.
As it relates to the relationship of church and state.
Sure.
And what are those, I guess, real fine lines that separate the two?
Absolutely, I'll be happy to, Pastor.
If it exists.
You bet.
Yes, sir. Forgive me, sir.
Oh, yes, it's fine. I'm Gregory Quinnlan, I'm the president of PFOX, that stands for Parents and Friends of Ex-Gays and Gays. So as you look at me, you're looking at somebody who lived 10 years of his life as an out and open homosexual activist, lobbied in Washington DC for 10 years, been out of the lifestyle for 20 years. I know I look 24, but I'm really 54. My hair is chemically dependent, needs a fix right now, but besides all of that, I've done this in over 20 states. I have testified before your state legislature on the homosexual issue. I've been on the 700 Club and been misquoted in every liberal news media that there is, I think, and called a few things that I wasn't. But just to let you know that the stand we are making here for marriage goes beyond just the definition of marriage. It actually goes to what we accept, what we don't accept, and what is best for our children. This is why we have to stand for marriage now.
Amen. God bless you, Greg. Pleasure to have you. Can I ask a question?
Sure.
What brought the change?
Oh, boy. Blessed is the man who can testify without preaching, so let me try to do that. I grew up with Archie Bunker as my father. Some of you young folk have no idea who I'm talking about, and that really hurts when I have these blank looks from people who are 30 and younger. Who? Archie who? Yeah. But my dad was also not just, you know, the redneck, he was also an atheist. And he was also a violent man who used to beat me up on a regular basis. I was eight years old, I came to Christ, and it was the real deal. And when I was 10 years old, I was sexually molested by a boy across the street. And at that moment, I got something I wasn't getting in church, I wasn't getting in school, and I wasn't getting at home. I got affection, I got approval, and I got affirmation. Somebody was touching me without hitting me. Somebody was talking to me without screaming at me and calling me names. Somebody made me feel like I had value and worth, and let's face it, folks, it was sex. It felt good, so I went back for more. But in that process, it was, I started my double life. You know, a double-minded man is unstable in all his ways. I, in the, to make a long story short, I became a nurse, a licensed practical nurse at first, it stands for lousy paid nurse. Got my RN about a decade or so after that, and watched 100 of my friends and acquaintances die of AIDS before I quit counting. In the process of that, they knew about my Christian background and they had asked me these questions. Does God hate me? Am I going to hell? Would you read my favorite Bible verse at my funeral? Would you do my eulogy? Would you tell my son and daughter what happened to daddy? And I did all those things. And as time went on, God was speaking to me, he never lets go, he's never quiet, thank God. Still, but he never shuts up, and it came to a point where I was so sick and tired of being sick and tired, I rededicated my life back to Jesus Christ. Understanding what the manufacturer's guidelines were and deciding to follow them.
God bless you, sir. Wonderful, wonderful testimony. Amen. Wonderful. Amen. And to the glory of God, that's what all of this is about. And then again, to draw attention to the manufacturer's guidelines, indeed, for marriage. Thank you again for being here, panelists, and also the group that's out tonight, Man of Nights and other visitors. Really appreciate you being here. With that, we have an outline of how we're going to approach tonight's town hall meeting. And we're going to start with a video tonight. And I think we're ready for that.
My name is Bishop D.W. Jackson, Chairman of Minister State Nostalgia, with a message to Christians in the black community. It is time to hand the slave devotion to the Democrat Party. They have insulted us, used us, and manipulated us. They have saturated the black community with ridiculous lies. Unless we support the Democrat Party, we will be returned to slavery. We will be robbed of voting rights. The Martin Luther King holiday will be repealed. They think we are stupid and that these lies will hold us captive while they violate everything we believe as Christians. The Democrat Party has created an unholy alliance between certain so-called civil rights leaders and Planned Parenthood, which has killed unborn black babies by the tens of millions. Planned Parenthood has been far more lethal to black lives than the KKK ever was. And the Democrat Party and their black civil rights allies are partners in this genocide. The Democrat Party has equated homosexuality with being black, which is another outrageous lie. They can keep their homosexuality private. You and I cannot hide being black. I need not recount to you painful history of slavery, Jim Crow, lynchings, and sterilizations, all because of skin color. Anyone who dares equate the so-called gay rights movement to the history of black Americans is exploiting the black community. They say opposition to same-sex marriage is the same as opposition to interracial marriage. That is an insult to human intelligence. It is a lie. No Christian should support this. Yet the Democrat Party has now declared same-sex marriage an official part of its platform. And black Christians remain in that party? The civil rights establishment has embraced the lies and betrayed the black community and God almighty for 30 pieces of silver from the Democrat Party. We as Christians ought to know that. Shame on us for allowing ourselves to be sold to the highest there. We belong to God. Our ancestors were sold against their will centuries ago, but we're going to the slave market voluntarily today. Yes, it's just that other. When you call it when Jesus Christ died on the cross for your sins and my sins and paid the price for our freedom, and you join in covenant with a political party that doesn't even want God mentioned in their platform, and gets offended at the very mention of Jesus' name? If your pastor tells you to vote for a party that disrespects Jesus, you need to leave that church. Black pastors are also going to have to answer for whether they serve Jesus or the Democrat Party. The black community will never prosper by betraying God and following leadership that carries the favor of the Democrat Party. It is time for Christians to have the faith and courage to refuse to associate with a political party that has over the years become anti-Christian, anti-church, anti-Bible, anti-life, anti-family, and anti-God. The Democrat Party is also becoming increasingly anti-Israel, and God said, "I will curse those that curse Israel." Do you want to be cursed with them? It is time to come out of the Democrat Party and to refuse to support its candidates in their rebellion against God. It's not about party, but principle. It's not about race, but righteousness. And you will stand before God to give an account for your choices and motives. We don't need the Democrat Party or any party, we need God. God will take care of us. It's been a long time coming, but the time has come to take a stand. Come up from among them. Exodus 8.
Amen. Well, Austin, are we still on legal ground?
You are.
Okay.
You are. Pardon?
Barely, though, huh?
Barely. But you know what? I think the firmest ground is the ground that God has laid, and the ground that God has laid for the church. If you look in the history of this country, before 1954, churches and pastors regularly throughout this country engaged in what they would call election Sundays, and they would perform election sermons. And then in 1954, an interesting thing happened. Congress passed a law that said nonprofit organizations can neither support nor oppose candidates for office, asking the church to render under Caesar that which belongs to God. Muffling a pastor from speaking biblical truth from the pulpit about something that impacts not only people in their congregation, but everybody in their community, who we sitting in the driver's seat and holding the wheel and the keys to government. And that is blatantly unconstitutional, blatantly unconstitutional to do that. The church is to be free in all respects, and anything the government, any entity the government can silence or tax, it can also diminish or take away. The government should have no holds on what a pastor tells his or her parishioners from the pulpit whatsoever. And so at Alliance Defending Freedom, we started an initiative called Pulpit Freedom Sunday. It started with 26 pastors five years ago, and is now over 1,600 pastors each year, of men and women of courage taking their pulpit and defying the IRS law and giving an election sermon Sunday that specifically supports or endorses or opposes candidates for office. And we're sending it to the IRS with a cover letter saying, "Come and get me. Come and get me." We're trying to pick a fight so we can get that law taken down is unconstitutional. And with more and more pastors exponentially are doing this, and one of two things is going to happen. Either the IRS is going to take the bait and we're going to get that law struck down and re-free the pulpit, or the IRS is going to be so overwhelmed with the fact that the church has reclaimed its rightful place in our society that they won't dare touch it. Either way, I don't care. But the pulpit will be legally free in this country, absolutely.
Amen. Wonderful. Excellent. Excellent. Wonderful. Why don't we, we're going to pause on that discussion for a moment, but we do want to get back on track with this video.
................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................. And also, it's the same marriage license that is then transferred when you're actually doing a wedding ceremony. So, it's only one marriage license. So, there's no civil marriage license and a church marriage license. Just wanna give that clarity. So, it allows it so that gays and lesbians can marry and basically obtain a marriage license. That is the big difference of this. What you also hear in some of the context of the bill, which you hear from pastors like Dante Hickman, that will say that you have the ability, pastors will not be forced to marry people in their congregations immediately, and, you know, that there are certain religious liberty protections within the context of that bill. Now, our position is this, that's absolutely disingenuous. Now, there's absolutely disingenuous for multiple reasons, which, when they talk about, "Are you taking away rights?" Well, one, and I'm not trying to answer all of this because you got good people that can answer a whole lot, but just from a context of the bill itself, well, the bill has fines and penalties written in the bill itself. So, you can't have a bill that says, "Well, we, there's no real fines or there's protections in there, but you have fines and penalties." Why are fines and penalties written in the bill? Because when you violate it, you will be penalized. We already understand a lot of the context that has already gone on in other states that have passed these issues by legislative environment or judicially, or judicially, that there are already consequences that take place. There are no business protections, meaning if you're a business owner, you can't just opt out and say, "I don't wanna do a service for a gay or homosexual couple." There are no individual protections. And from a church perspective, any answer, every organization you have, any five-on-one, C3, other organizations, CDCs, daycare centers, nursery schools, whatever they may be, those are not covered under this bill. And so, when we say "not covered," that means if you rent your facility to them or people wanna rent their facility out, that's not covered under the auspices of this bill. And Austin could probably even speak to it more. But, I'm just giving you that perspective. Right now, it's a very, it's a loaded bill, and it's a bad bill. And so, our job is to make sure we vote the bill down, vote against question six.
Amen.
So, as far as taking away rights, as far as the video was concerned, they brought up the issue that everyone should have the same right. What, maybe we'll get Austin to speak to that.
Sure, sure. And I'll do what lawyers do, which is answer questions with other questions. And let me propose, first and foremost, something you'll never hear the other side of this debate. They'll never bring it up, they'll never talk about it, but let's talk about it tonight. Why do we have marriage laws? Why did the government of the state of Maryland and every other state in this country choose to take God's first institution and codify it in their law? And it's a worthwhile question because it answers whether or not we should be looking at transforming and changing the definition of marriage. Government didn't have a whole bunch of money sitting around and said, "How do we get this money out to the people? Ah-ha, let's create marriage, and then, we can, through marriage, get this money out there." No, that's not how marriage came about. Government recognized a long time ago that, you know what? This stable union of men and women coming together and producing and rearing the next generation is a good thing. And we wanna be in the business of that because when you look at married couples and the children that they raise, government expends less taxpayer money on those circumstances. It's better for society as a whole. The children, look at the statistics from the most recent Census Bureau. We had a census in 2010. The statistics are staggering. The percentage of married couples that is on public assistance is minimal. The highest percentage of people that is not, that is on public assistance are single moms and single dads, mostly in minority communities. Okay, now, there's an indication there why government is in the marriage business together. If you wanna know why government's in the marriage business, look at the marriage license application. You go get married in Maryland, what do you have to provide on that sheet? Well, you gotta provide your name, the name of your spouse. You have to aver that you are of the opposite sex and that you're not related by blood or a certain degree of consanguinity. What's interesting is you're not required to declare on this government form, whether you love the person you're getting married to, what your sexual orientation is, whether you live under the same roof, whether you share a bank account or assets or anything like that, because the government doesn't care about that. It cares about the fact that men and women, from the beginning of time, have, come together and they have sex. And sex makes babies, and society needs babies. And government wants to bond together the men and women that make babies to themselves and to the babies that they create to provide that stable bond and union. Every state that has redefined marriage, Massachusetts, Vermont, et cetera, they've never changed their marriage license application. You don't have to go in there and aver that you love the person or that you live together or your sexual orientation. The government doesn't care about any of that. So, are you taking away rights? No. Well, there aren't rights there to begin with, number one. It's kind of a silly question. Same-sex couples cannot get married. So, you can't take away something that doesn't exist, number one. But, number two, does it make sense to extend the privileges for married couples to couples that will intentionally deprive children of either a mother or a father? And that's really the central question right here. Do we believe that moms and dads are important and necessary and each provide wonderful and unique gifts? I like to believe that I'm a good father. I like to believe that. I have my moments. But, I know that as good as I may be at times, there's no way I can provide to my daughters the wonderful things that my wife, as a woman and a mother, gives them. All the love in the world doesn't transform a man into a woman or a woman into a man, unless we believe that the sexes are interchangeable, which we should not. We have to recognize that moms and dads really do matter. And finally, I'll end with this. That topical situation that was mentioned on the video could have been resolved by this. The person who died before their death scribbling out, "I so-and-so will give all of my property to X," and sign it. It would take that long, that is what's called a holographic will because it is wholly in their handwriting, and it would take all of 30 seconds to accomplish. And that situation never would have happened legally. The legal remedy is there. Now, are you asking me to believe that if they had the option of going down to City Hall, filling out an application, paying a fee, then going and finding Minister of Justice of Peace and going through all those hoops and getting married? They would have done it? When you can scribble about 20 words on a piece of paper and resolve that situation, it's a little difficult to accept.
Good, excellent, excellent question. You lived up to your expectation. There's another aspect that comes relative to this issue of fairness, and that has to do with the alteration of words, the definition of words. And it seems like, again, when this agenda, they want to euphemize words and meanings to help tone down the negative effect. Pastor Anderson, would you speak to the issue of words change, changing our understanding of this issue from a biblical standpoint? Would you maybe share what that, the implications would look like from a biblical standpoint?
If I could look at it in another way, just for a moment.
Sure, go right ahead.
I hear the word "fair" a lot. And first of all, life isn't fair.
Amen.
Okay, so, whatever that means, life isn't fair, but God is good. Number one is that you wanna talk about fairness. I think fairness, is it fair for every child to know and have a real father and a real mother? I think that's fair. If we've been given the charge by God to have a mother and a father, and it's important, from Genesis, chapter 2, it says, "For this reason shall a man leave his father and father."
No, 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 no. What version are you reading here?
I thought it said, "Leave his father and mother." And be joined to his wife, Eve. So, it's important that it's fair for the child to know and have a loving, real father and mother. I think it's also fair, in fact, more fair, that we have a standard definition. Once we start changing it, we're changing what God established. Anything is open now. I thought our God is righteous, perfect, all-knowing. So, if He does what He does and it's righteous, anything less than that is not righteous. And thus, you probably have heard a word from the book of Proverbs that says, "Righteousness exalts a nation." But, sin is a reproach of any people. And we are rushing into sin with the force of law to change and define, redefine marriage. I'd rather follow what Peter said. He said something like, "We must obey God rather than man." I also think it's, is it really fair to have two people in society in a same-sex relationship? Well, that's already been established in our state. Right or wrong, it's already there. They already have benefits and things of that nature. We're talking about a standard that's been around thousands of years from Africa, Asia, Europe, America. And we think we're that smart? That we can change thousands of years of history? In fact, it goes beyond the years of history. It goes back to the beginning, where Jesus said, "In the beginning, it was not so."
That's right.
He created male and female. By the way, in this whole discussion, to me, I understand the logical debates and we need that. Whatever happened to something is right and something is wrong? You know what I'm saying? Whatever happened to, we draw our line here? Whatever happened, since I'm a pastor up here, I think I can get away with that. Whatever happened to sin?
Amen, amen.
Amen, amen.
It is not fair to open up a back door that will legalize prostitution.
How about that?
It's not fair to open up a back door that will possibly legalize B.C. Allen.
Sure, sure, that's right.
It's not fair to open up a back door that will possibly lead to polygamy. We, we wanna change, once you start messing what God has established for us, we're opening up a door to redefine incest. Where do you stop? The Scriptures in Leviticus 18:22, you know what that says? That a man is not to lay down with another man. If they do that, it's an abomination. But, there is one verse I really wanted to drive home and then I'll stop. But, that's in Romans, chapter 1. And it's the very last verse, as you know, Paul addresses this. Listen to the last verse, knowing the righteous judgment of God, that those who practice such things are deserving of death. Not only do the same, but watch this, for those who also approve of those who practice these things. When, if we don't vote against it, then we are approving these things that are worthy of death.
Wow, awesome, awesome. Excellent, excellent. And let me pause here, maybe, any questions so far? I know a lot's been stated, and keep your questions concise. Okay, Dick and Tab.
There are, there are many people, including Christians, who...
Hold the mic up.
Who are confused about how they should vote. You understand? And don't see that, don't see that one has anything to do with the other. So, I'm gonna, Pastor McCoy, don't hide your face, because this question is for you. You understand? And I would like to hear, you understand, what you guys would say to that.
Just to make sure I got this right? In terms of voting on this issue or voting?
In terms of putting some, in terms of putting somebody in office that thinks this issue is okay.
Don't vote for them.
Let me, yeah. Well, here, let me, let me, let me give this perspective. I'm gonna try and be as diplomatic as I can be. First and foremost, and I hear you on the question, I really do. A lot of people are asking the question, "Well, who do I vote for in terms of a general, broader presidential candidacy?" I think it also needs to boil down to senatorial candidacy, congressional candidacy, your local state senate, your local state delegate, and in every district where we have representatives. Because you think about it, first and foremost, all politics are very local. And the people that actually put this bill on the table were the delegates and the senators in the state of Maryland. It wasn't the president, it wasn't the senator, you know, the Ben Card or anybody else. It was just the delegates of our state. Now, hear me, in Baltimore specifically, specifically in Baltimore, we had people that just absolutely bailed on this issue in our House of Delegates and in our senator, in our senate race.
When you say "bailed," you mean?
Meaning, they, you look at like Senator James Brochuson, who was a Baltimore County senator. Basically, he said, "Well, I'm, you know, I'm gonna support marriage." That's what he started out with. But, when he got rubber meat the road, he bailed on marriage. And when I say "bailed on," he absolutely declared his support the other way. But, not only did that, the day he declared it the other way, he already had a press conference set up and said, "Well, you know, just because people on our side, on this side, are so mean." He decided to change his viewpoint. But, he had already had a press conference set up. So, he had that premeditated for quite some time. I think when you're looking at the local delegations in the city and Senator McFadden and some of these others, I mean, they absolutely did not vote for marriage. They voted against this, I mean, they voted to pass this bill. And so, there's a host of them down there. You look at Senator Joan Carter Conway, she voted to pass this bill. You look at, you know, and I can go through the list. I mean, Tomage Branch was a guy who stood up strong. You look at, and I gotta give him his kudos because he did. Cheryl Glenn was another delegate who stood up strong. Everybody else began to just say, "Look, we're not doing this." And they voted for this bill. And they knew what the people wanted. Because, you know, they actually showed up some meetings and said, "Well, nobody's telling me." "No, no, we got a host of people telling you the truth." And they just decided, they don't think, you know, they wanted to make sure they just vote for this bill. So, I think, one, starting off there, if you start escalating up and saying, "Okay, who do I vote for in this big presidential election?" That kind of thing, one, I can't tell you that. But, I think you do gotta understand who is supporting this issue, who's not. And regardless of where you do, our consistent words in Maryland Marriage Alliance, and the one thing we've done, we've brought together a big coalition. Coalition from, I mean, you know, you got black, white, Hispanic, Asians, and all sorts of everybody kinda in this big old huge coalition. Now, in that big coalition, a whole lot of people got perspective on where we should vote, who we should vote for, and how everything should lay out. I've been real delicate to say, "Well, you know what? It wouldn't be right for me as the chairman, the guy, kinda run this, to take a position on who I'm voting for specifically." Because, you know, you gotta give people the room to be able to vote for whatever presidential candidate you wanna vote for. But, hear me, I know who I'm voting for. But, at the same time, you gotta understand, this critical issue is the issue we have to stop in the state. We have to vote against question six. The reason why we're saying this from, the reason why we're holding these forums, talking to people like you, is that if you agree with us, we need you to go out and tell 20, 30, 40, 50, 100 people over these next two weeks to make sure they vote against question six. And so, I'm with you 100%. I do agree. Now, I think the direct question, so I don't wanna be elusive, is that our president come out and said, "Hey, he is personally involved in this issue. He is supporting same-sex marriage now." Well, let me tell you what I think about that. I think that President Obama, President, I have to respect the office of the presidency. But, I will say this, from a presidential perspective, he said it is his personal opinion and he's doing it. Now, I've heard a lot of people say, "Well, he's, that's the president. He gets, he's entitled to his personal opinion." He is. However, as a president, your personal opinion is really your political decision. And it's a political position. Now, when he takes a political position, let me give you the highlights of this. He's also said, "I'm not gonna defend the Defense of Marriage." He has also backed away from every lawsuit that you can defend marriage within our country. He has pulled attorneys off of that and said, "We're not gonna defend that law anymore." It's kinda like, the police officers, here are the laws that are currently in the land. Now, I'm pulling all these cops off of this law and say, "Y'all just do what you wanna do on that law." You could, we're not gonna even defend it. So, break it if you wanna break it, do whatever you wanna do. And that's his inadvertent way to say, "We wanna see this law fail." Now, that's his position. Now, I think his position goes far more than just saying, "This is my personal opinion." One thing I will say, only three years ago, President Obama said several times that he believes marriage is between a man and a woman. President Obama has married Michelle Obama, a woman. He has had two daughters. I think Michelle Obama has recently said, in the Democratic National Convention speech, that her chief job is to be a mom and a chief. We say it's a mom and a chief? Shouldn't every kid have a mom and a chief and a dad and a chief? That should be the standard. Now, we understand, a whole lot of stuff goes on that in our communities doesn't quite allow for the standard. But, that should be the standard that we all allow for, and the president has taken that position. Now, it's unfortunate that he has, because I think, you know, it shouldn't have been taken. But, he has. But, you can go out and vote for whoever you wanna vote for technically. But, I will say, you gotta vote against question six.
Very good, very good. Sure, sure, I'm sorry, forgive me.
I'm gonna go backwards and answer your question too. And the question is with two questions, we'll do his game, the lawyer's game. First question is, who's on the Lord's side? Ain't nobody in here stupid. Who's on the Lord's side? Who's standing for righteousness? Who? Who is, who isn't? And then, I got another question for you, everyone in this room. Are you more of a Christian than you are a Democrat? Are you more of a follower of Jesus Christ than you are a Republican? Every breath we take is temporary, but eternity lasts forever. And ain't nobody, born again, bloodwashed or otherwise, gonna bypass judgment.
That's right.
So, get a clue. Get a clue. Now, back to segment one. Are we taking away rights when we vote against question six? I have been confronted with this question in every state I've been in to debate and on the news and all this kinda stuff. And there's a few people on television, I'd love to have them ask me a couple of questions. Particularly that last one there, I think, on that segment. Yeah, I want that one. Anyway, so, I wanna ask you this, what is a civil right? When you ask me if you're gonna take away a civil right, don't you, shouldn't you also first know what the definition is? Let me tell you this now, this gets me in a lot of trouble, and obviously, I don't care. Homosexuality is not a civil right. Civil rights are based on three things. Is it innate? Is it immutable? And can that supposed minority group defend themselves? Ladies and gentlemen, brethren, we would not be in this discussion right now if the homosexual community wasn't able to defend themselves. Hello. Is it immutable? Can it change? Hello. I'm an ex-gay, I'm not the only one. This isn't Winnie the Pooh and I'm not Tigger. There are thousands upon thousands of ex-gays, former homosexuals out there, and some of them are famous. Anne Hayes, remember Anne Hayes? Was Ellen Degenerate, Degeneres? You know, yeah, she married now and got children by a man. Because Ellen didn't have the stuff to give her kids. Anybody in here stupid? All right. So, that's one example. There are lots of ex-gays out there, former homosexuals, people who used to be and aren't anymore. How did they do that? Because they made a decision. And they can make that decision because they're not counter to what they were when they were created and purposed by Almighty God. So, it is not innate. I was not born gay. There is no gay gene. We mapped the human genome. Dr. Francis Collins, National Institutes of Health, with the Human Genome Project instituted under Bill Clinton. We know Bill Clinton couldn't keep his pants on. So, you know, so, we know this guy, we mapped the human genome. Here's what we found, and this is what caused this man, world-renowned geneticist, to make this statement. Homosexuality is not hardwired. It's not hardwired. We could not find a gay gene. You know why they can't find it? You can't find what don't exist. We found that there were just less than 30,000 genes, not the millions that they were expecting. Combinations matter, other things or varieties of things cause someone to behave differently, though that's a whole different topic. But, I just want you to know, it is not innate. You are not born that way. Is it immutable? Of course, it is not immutable. You can change. I have, women, we also know, and the psychiatric community says so, that sexuality is fluid. They go back and forth. Heterosexual, homosexual, bisexual, tri-sexual, try anything. You know, just whatever they wanna do. want to do. So, on those measures, is it innate? Is it immutable? And can they defend themselves? We have no civil right here. We have no civil right here, it does not measure up to a civil right. The other thing we talked about too is the need of a parent. Now, I want to bring up this little fact too. See, facts, we don't get those on the news. We don't get those on, even Fox, we don't get facts. Okay, so, let me give you a fact here. Parliamentary Report on Family and the Rights of the Children. Now, parliamentary report, who did that report? The government of France. The government of France did this under Jacques Chirac. Remember Jacques Chirac, 9/11? Yeah, the London Daily Mirror called him a worm because he wouldn't stand with the United States after we'd been attacked after 9/11? That Jacques Chirac. Atheistic, socialistic France. They did this report, and you know what they concluded in their scientific report that was not at all religious, under any means whatsoever? They concluded this, "We cannot codify homosexual marriage because children need a mother and a father." Wow, there's real sociological science, and it wasn't done with somebody Bible-thumping, with some other axe to grind. It was done by socialistic France, by social scientists. So, there's the point, to segment one, are we taking away rights when we vote against question six? No!
Excellent. God bless you, sir. Wonderful. Sure, Director of the Court.
I'm just going to give a very quick thing, just so people understand. Benefits provided to domestic partners which, and same-sex couples, under Maryland law, just so you understand, healthcare facility visitation, healthcare decision-making, including the capacity to make medical and end-of-life decisions, organ donation priority, the ability to adopt children, nursing room sharing, funeral arrangements, state employee health benefits, health and life insurance coverage for domestic partners that request an employee, exemption from recollections, taxes, and under certain circumstances, state and county transfer taxes, exemption from state inheritance tax are already given in Maryland state law.
Plus, they can contract the way private parties can contract, they can enter into wills, the way private parties can, like we mentioned earlier, and so, all other generic forms of law are also, of course, available to same-sex couples in terms of managing their lives and their estates and everything along those lines.
And another fact of this too, as a nurse, I was the medical power of attorney when my father died. So, and guess what? That hospital didn't care that I was his eldest son. That hospital didn't care that I was a nurse. That hospital cared that my signature and his signature were on that medical power of attorney. That's what they cared about. They wanted to know that those names were on that legal document. It could have been Joe Blow from the street that could have had the medical power of attorney over my father, and that's the point. That document was signed, and it didn't matter who was on, and I want you to know, because I was a nurse and an AIDS nurse, I was medical power of attorney to a lot of men who were dying, and their families weren't. It had nothing to do with me having any relationship with them, and I had no sexual relationship with these men. It had to do with the very fact that my name and their name are on the same document.
A document which is available under Maryland law.
Okay. So, in light of that, if they do have the right, then what is this discussion about? Is it just a ruse to confuse the populace, as if to make them think that to vote against it takes away the right?
I think it's putting, I think it's putting the cart before the horse. I think it's trying to distract the minds and hearts of the voters from what marriage is really about.
Exactly.
Getting us into a mindset about rights, when we realize that marriage is more about mothers and fathers. You know, not every couple has a child, but every child has a mom and a dad. Every child has a mom and a dad. Whether we recognize it or not, that is immutable biological fact, every child has a mom and a dad, and that's why we have marriage. And if we get pulled over into a discussion about rights and we start counting, well, you get this right here, and you get this right there, and you get this right here and this right there, we lose sight of what marriage is all about. It's ultimately about, people don't get married because, "Hey, you want to get married because we're going to get a whole bunch of rights from the government?" You know? That's not, that's not why people get married. And so, if we keep our eye on the ball, we understand the place the rights argument has, it is not the thrust of what's on the ballot on November 6th.
Very good, excellent. Let's take a look at segment two, please.
You've got to know, reason that if you love someone, that you shouldn't be able to consider life one hundred percent solely, to be happy, to be together, to be married, to be married in the eyes of our state. This is about quality, this is about fairness. People that decide to enter into relationships, or people that find themselves in relationships, they need and desire the same equal recognition that everybody else does.
Amen. And with that, I'm going to ask Greg Quinlan, once again, representative of PFOX, speak to this issue of love and commitment, Greg, if you would, please.
Love, 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 love.